Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, depending on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, January 23, 2024. As we begin tonight, I ask that you join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, both in person and virtually. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our shared passion for our wonderful city. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you, everyone. And now, if you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So nice to see everybody here tonight. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Mullins?
Present.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Vice Mayor Perez?
Here.
And Mayor Schultz?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. We would like to begin by advising the community that there will be three periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and the two public hearings this evening. The first general public comment period is for any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item except for the two public hearings. If you wish to provide a public comment by telephone, please call now at 818-238-3335. The second and third public comment periods are for the public hearings. To comment by phone on those public hearings, please call when the public hearing begins, and you can use that same phone number that I just provided. We have seven announcements for this evening.
Following our announcements for January 23, 2024, Christmas tree drop-off stations are available at Ralphway Park, Macambridge Park, and Verdugo Park now through January 26. Residents may also set out their holiday trees curbside for no additional cost. Lights, decorations, and stands must be removed prior to disposal, and artificial trees are prohibited. View all safety disposal tips on burbankca.gov. The Community Development Department invites you to a virtual community meeting to provide a walkthrough of draft development standards being considered for Senate Bill 9 projects on Monday, January 29 at 6:00 p.m. Join us to provide your feedback and ask questions of staff. No decisions will be made at this informational meeting. For more information, please visit the pending project webpage or contact the project planner Xavier Thomas at xathomas@burbankca.gov. The Community Development Department invites you to participate in a walking and bus tour for the Golden State specific plan on Saturday, February 3 at 8:30 a.m. The meeting location will be at Randy's Donuts located at 3007 North Hollywood Way. The city is developing a specific plan for the Golden State District that will establish a vision for the future of the district, encourage the responsible development of new housing near the Metro League stations and the proposed high-speed rail station, support high-quality employment, and improve active transportation. For more information and to RSVP, please visit the project webpage or contact the Golden State specific plan team at gssp@burbankca.gov. Step into the world of adaptive sports at the 2024 Adaptive Sports Expo proudly presented by the Department of Parks and Recreation. This dynamic expo is taking place at Macambridge Park on February 17. To learn more about the featured sports and registration, visit burbankca.gov base. Attention California homeowners, applications are open for the earthquake, brace, and bolt program. Receive up to $3,000 in grant funding for a seismic retrofit of your home to reduce the risk of earthquake damage. Qualifying homes must apply by February 21. Visit earthquake, brace, bolt.com to learn more. The Burbank City Clerk's Office would like to remind residents that February 20 is the last day to register to vote in the March 5 presidential primary election. Please be advised if you are a no-party preference voter, you will receive a nonpartisan ballot with no presidential candidates unless you request a party's ballot from the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder County Clerk's Office. No party preference voters who would like to cast a vote for president in the March primary should visit lavote.gov for more information or contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office. Burbank Water and Power is considering changes to the city's sustainable water use ordinance to address current water use issues and upcoming regulations. We invite you to attend a public meeting to discuss these proposed changes and how they will affect the residents of Burbank. All residents and businesses are invited to voice their thoughts and give input. Please check the events calendar on burbankca.gov for upcoming meeting dates and locations. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Great. And with that, we have one presentation this evening, and that is the presentation of a proclamation and recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Month for January 2024. And I want to begin by welcoming up my friend, my neighbor, Lieutenant Governor of District 9 of Zonta, Gloria Solis. And Gloria, do you want to just mention who is joining here tonight?
Yes, well, we've got one of a couple of new members. Yes, we have Cindy Kudzie, and we have Emma Aldette. Oh, and Britt. Oh, my goodness. She's our former governor for District 9.
Wow. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is fantastic. So while you two get set up, and Gloria, I know you have a few words you want to say, I'm just going to begin by reading the proclamation out loud for the community. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery, it is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis. Victims of human trafficking are subjected to force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. And whereas an estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, with almost 20% of all trafficking victims being children, including cases of human trafficking reported in every U.S. state and territory. And whereas anyone can be a victim of human trafficking, while women and girls are the primary victims, victims and survivors come from every background, race, gender, sexual orientation, and economic status. And whereas law enforcement, private industry, nonprofits, and nongovernmental organizations such as the Zonta Club of the Burbank area are working to end human trafficking. And whereas the members of the Zonta Club of Burbank area, through collaboration with Journey Out, Zoe International, and the Los Angeles Regional Human Trafficking Task Force continue to raise awareness about human trafficking through training, seminars, and speaking engagements. And whereas the city of Burbank strives to become a place where human trafficking simply does not exist, where people have opportunities available to them, and where all people are treated as worthy of a supportive community and of freedom. Now, I therefore, Nick Schultz, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do by here proclaim January 1 through 31st of 2024 to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Burbank, and I encourage everyone in our community to stand with the Zonta Club of the Burbank area to help end modern-day slavery and exploitation. Gloria, I will give this, actually, I'll hold this for you. I know you have a few words to share, so I'll hand you the mic.
Some of you may have seen the Burbank leader July 29 of 2023, front page below the fold. It said that online crimes against children operation leads to 139 arrests. Burbank police officers and detectives were involved in that sting. And we have this general concept that human trafficking, you know, something, a white van comes by and snatches somebody. It's not, that is a TV version, a movie version. But in fact, since the pandemic, so many of our children have been glued to their screens, their cell phones, their iPads, their computers, and they have become victims of predators. And just to list a couple of crimes, and this was in the public newspaper, so I'm not, you know, I don't think I'm stepping over anyone's toes, but the contact, attempt contact with minor for sex, sending obscene matter to a child for sex, sodomy of a child under 10 years of age, and all of this happened because we had investigators working on this human trafficking task force, being able to investigate and to go ahead and arrest them. And this is just 139 arrests, people that they were able to find. And there are so many more out there. You need to be educated. We all need to be aware and educated. And Zonta Club of Burbank area is hosting a human trafficking seminar this coming Saturday, the Buena Vista Library, from 10:30 to 12:30. We will be having a member, a sergeant, from the L.A. County Human Trafficking Task Force, including a survivor who was trafficked from the age of 12 through 21. And she was able to escape her trafficker because he was arrested and put in prison. So I appreciate, especially Deputy Attorney General Nick Schultz, I appreciate your help in everything that we've been able to accomplish through Zonta and through your efforts.
Thank you, Gloria. I'm going to hand this over to you. In a moment, I'm going to ask a couple of my colleagues who are Zonta Club members to come down. Before they do, I really just want to emphasize one thing that you said, Gloria, and I know it's something that you're all passionate about. Human trafficking is prevalent in our community. This is not a theoretical thing. It is very much, it's right here at home. We see it in Los Angeles. We see it in Burbank. Our police department certainly knows that. I encourage everyone to get engaged, to come to this seminar, to learn the signs of human trafficking, and hopefully by working together, we can root this out of our community once and for all. So thank you all for what you do and for all the hours that you put into it. And I have a feeling I'll be seeing you next week. So if we could take two quick photos, we're going to do one with the four of you and me, and then if I can get all Zonta Club members to come on up as well. Okay, Zontians?
Guess I gotta join.
I think that's a sign there, Councilmember Anthony.
And as a matter of fact, Zonta, Zonta, any member, individual who is interested and believes in the mission of woman empowerment is free to join Zonta.
And where can they do that, Gloria? How can you get involved?
zantaburbank.org.
Thank you. All right, let's take that photo. Give them a hand, everybody.
All right, I submitted my membership online. That was easy.
Next picture. Okay, and with that, well, this is exciting. Assistant City Manager Courtney Paget, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to invite up our Chief Information Officer, Kevin Gray, who's going to give an update on a new feature upcoming on the city's Our Burbank 311 app.
Welcome, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, council members, Kevin Gray, Chief Information Officer for the City of Burbank. So we have a cool new feature for our, for the Our Burbank 311 app that we'd like to demonstrate for you. And I'd like to introduce Ando Vesapian, Lead Technology Product Manager for the IT Department, to come up and do the demo.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Courtney. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, council members, and members of the public. My name is Ando Vesapian, and I'm with the city's Information Technology Department. Tonight, I'll be showcasing the live Burbank Bus feature on the 311 app. So without further ado, I'd like to draw your attention to the screens as I navigate through the feature on my mobile device. All right. I'm going to click on the 311 app.
And this is available for download for any iPhone or Android user?
That is correct.
Great. I hope everyone takes advantage and does it right now.
I'm going to select the 311 app.
I should interrupt and say, it'll actually be released next week, Tuesday.
Oh, okay. I was trying to use it to get home tonight.
I neglected to say that. I apologize.
I had such a good start to that meeting, Kevin. All right, please, continue.
So the 311 app is available to download now. Just this, this feature will be showcased on January 30.
I appreciate the save. I really do.
All right. So once I click on the 311 app, I select the Burbank Bus feature. The app displays nearby stops and arrival times for those stops. Below that, we can see the two routes available in Burbank. The orange route, which runs North Hollywood Metro Station to Burbank Airport Metro Station. And then we have the pink route, which runs from the Burbank Metro Station to the Universal City Metro Station. For tonight's demonstration, we'll be taking a closer look at the pink route. Here, we can see all the stops available along that route. By selecting one of the stops, we can view bus numbers and arrival times for that selected stop. Below the arrival times, we have the option to send this information via text to any mobile device. Now, we'll take a look at the live map. When viewing the map, we can see the complete route, real-time bus location, which is indicated by red and green arrows that are updated every 15 seconds. And all those stops along that route indicated by dots. If we select one of the dots, we can see information such as bus numbers and arrival times displayed below the map. Another useful feature we've included in the street view is the street view for that specific stop, as you can see there. This will allow you to familiarize yourself with that specific location. That concludes our demonstration of the 311 Live Burbank Bus feature, which will be going live again January 30.
Great. Thank you both so much. That is, I do love technology. Colleagues, any brief questions for staff? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My big burning question is, what are we doing to get the word out? Because this is an amazing feature. This is what I think half of our county dreams of having. So I would love to know what we're doing to let our residents know that this will be available to them.
Of course.
I will take that question for you. So we've got a pretty robust outreach plan. We're going to do a press release, social media announcement, Instagram reel. We're going to announce it on our website. We'll also do an email blast to all of our residents, a bulletin on our channel. There's going to be flyer printouts that are going to be distributed to our various departments and buildings, public counters, and then there'll be a city council meeting announcement also.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anthony?
What, what kind of signage do we have at the bus stops? Do we tell people to use the 311 app? Does it say, hey, you can track? Like, is that going to change at all?
Well, we don't have that now, just releasing the, the new feature for us, but that's a good idea. We'll take, we'll take note of that.
Okay. And then one quick question. The dots were red and green. What does the red and green mean?
The red means when the bus, when the bus is at a stop. So it could be for any number of reasons. It's usually when they're approaching a stop.
I probably could have figured that out, red and green. Okay.
And the green is when it's moving.
Yes, I was going to guess that. Okay. I retract my question.
Councilmember Takahashi?
That was going to be my question, at the bus stops, because when I'm at the bus stop...
But you just let me ask it. You let me ask.
When I'm at the bus stop, that's what I want to know, but how to figure out when the bus is going to get there. And so I think a lot of folks, that's probably the main way they'll figure it out, is when they're waiting for the bus. This is fantastic. I cannot tell you how many times I've come out of the metro stop at the Universal and wondering, when is the pink line going to get here? When is the 501 going to get here? And having that on my app, it's just easier to know when it's going to be there, when it's going to leave. So just very much appreciated all the work that you've done on this, and I'm super excited to take the bus next week to council.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perez, I think you have the final question?
Yes, not so much a question or comment. I think great idea to put it on the, on the bus stops themselves. Also, we have a wonderful Burbank Water and Power bill that our residents get, where I think would be a great place to put it if we can, just to get the word out more.
No doubt. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both very much, and great reports, Ms. Paget. Fantastic job. Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation of a legislative update from the city's federal legislative advocacy firm, The Ferguson Group. Joining us tonight, from the East Coast, but here in person, are Christopher Kearney and Charmaine Anderson. Welcome to both of you, and thank you for joining us in person.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and the rest of the council. We are delighted to be here. It's truly an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to represent you as your federal advocate in Washington. I'm joined by my colleague Charmaine Anderson, and we're going to spend just a few minutes giving you a sense of sort of who we are and how we operate, a little bit about what we've done so far, and maybe just a peek towards looking forward. So if I, let's see if that, there we go. So there you can see, as our shining faces, Gabby, our crack, Grant's person, is hard at work back on the East Coast, slightly snowed in, working away on a variety of issues, wasn't able to join us, but rest assured, she is, she is on the case. The thing I wanted to give you a sense of first and foremost is, we know how much work goes into the federal platform that you all put together, and that is your guiding principle and your guiding framework. It is one of the most comprehensive ones, frankly, that I have seen, and it, we feel is truly encompassing all of the major issues. And while there'll be tweaks here and there, we know, and some adjustments as you revise, rest assured that that is our framework, that is our guide for the work and the priority that we are doing on your behalf. Think of us as a full-service, comprehensive machine, if you will, that focuses on advocating, advocating for you on legislative and agency and regulatory priorities of yours as outlined in the framework and as we've discussed, but also on the funding side. There are a number of opportunities out there for funding for you, which we could talk a little bit about here shortly, that whether it be congressional earmarks, whether it be grants, loans, tax credits, there's a whole host of financing opportunities that are out there. But there are so many, and there are so many efforts in going about that, that we wanted to talk to you just a little bit about how we get into the weeds on that, which we're going to talk about in a little bit. And then we'll finish up with both our communications in terms of how we tend to intend to communicate with you both as we have to this point and going forward, and a little bit about what we've accomplished. So what I'd like to ask Charmaine to do is to talk just a little bit about sort of how we get our hands around and make sense of matching up your projects and your interests with the kind of funding opportunities that are out there.
Just leave it there.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Which is toward the latter part of that slide, just to kind of give you all a general sense of how we do what we do, and really the larger themes of just the operational sides of our firm, and one of which is the federal platform, which we utilize this federal platform, as Chris said, is kind of our guiding, our guiding mark of how to, you know, really work through the legislative process as well as the funding processes. And so we work with you, the city council, and the departments on really what those priorities are to help develop a federal agenda. And that encompasses not only federal funding opportunities, but then also legislative and or regulatory areas that we want to focus on. Again, all encompassing really where are those priorities and where is there a federal nexus. In addition with that federal platform, again, we feel like it's a living document. So again, it can be modified and changed throughout the course of our, you know, engagement for the course of that year. We try to do it annually, just to kind of set the parameters as we move into a new fiscal year and/or a calendar year with Congress, as well as aligning it with when the president will release his budget, which this year will be March the 7. And then secondly, we move into an advocacy. So once we have this federal platform established, we move into our advocacy phase, where we're really kind of aligning, where we're engaging with the congressional delegation, we're bringing on stakeholders to kind of help build momentum for that federal agenda and what those priorities are, engaging you also with the federal agencies, because that's important, because they do have a role to play in this process at the federal level. And then project funding, certainly as Chris mentioned, there's grant funding, there's federal authorization programs that go through Congress initially, where basically they're, they're providing kind of the blank check that, you know, kind of starts programs going forward, and then at the end, through the appropriations process, they'll fund various programs. We really want to get you aligned with some of these authorization programs, because those are oftentimes really your big-ticket programs, like your transportation and your water-related issues. And so in regards to federal funding also, again, like we said, there's grant opportunities, but then also just even on the regulatory side, oftentimes too, when you're working through a regulatory issue, it can help save money just by tweaks in how we can kind of work with those federal agencies to kind of provide, whether there's waivers and things of that sort, that can really help the city be more efficient in how you do your jobs. And then lastly, for us, again, communications, for us, we like to be very transparent, because again, our transparency allows us to be more engaged and aligned with what your priorities and opportunities are, and just kind of moving forward as far as, again, what the community understands kind of what we're doing back in Washington, and certainly just our reporting factor. We have a slew of different types of reporting opportunities, where again, it's weekly, monthly. In addition, we do regular phone calls already with members of the city to just really kind of, again, understand what is happening here in the city. And certainly we can also report back on what's going on in Washington, again, to make sure your best interest is at heart, and making sure you're aware of any opportunities that may be, you know, kind of disparaging against the city, where we can kind of circumvent that and/or those that look promising, so you can get ahead of it. So with that, I will pass back to Chris, so he can talk a little bit more about kind of what we've done thus far.
So we've run, if we go back, you'll see Charmaine was just, you can see on the screen, that gives you a quick sense of the step we take as we dig deeper into identifying our priorities, the various steps that we go through culminating with matching up funding with projects. As we also just discussed briefly, as you can see on the screen, there's a myriad of different ways that we communicate and newsletters, oh, sorry, a myriad of ways that we communicate, sorry, that we communicate. And one of the things I want to draw your attention to and drill down just for a minute, under general updates, you'll see that we, we provide legislative and grant updates, natural resource update, and so forth. What that is, is a series of newsletters, and we're going to work with your staff to make sure that your key departmental heads are getting these. And it's a good information newsletter. We've, it covers everything from the new grants that come out on a particular day or a particular week across the agencies. Some will apply to you, some won't, but it'll give your folks an ongoing and you all a sense of what's flowing and what's out there. We also do provide newsletters on a regular basis on how things are going in the area of cyber and broadband, on infrastructure and transportation. So again, an information flow where you're, you're constantly seeing that. Certainly, as that information comes to you and to staff, you want to, we will be available for communication. The communication is constant and goes both ways. One thing I do want to stress is that Charmaine and I both have been working with folks... One thing I do want to stress is that Charmaine and I both have been working with folks in California and the West for many years, going on decades. And so the notion of what you might think is a late evening call or an email or something like that, in my particular case, after 27 years of federal service, it's hard for me to turn my phone off, so my wife is constantly teasing me as we're watching sitcoms. I'm sitting there glancing at my phone, and it's 10:30 at night. It is just the nature of the business. So rest assured that that has become second nature to us. And so should you see something, and it's 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock your time or even later, don't hesitate. I do have to sleep some, as does Charmaine, but we will do our best to be as responsive as we possibly can. And then the one thing I also wanted to mention as we close out here is, we've been working with you all for the last couple, three months now. As you can see, we've already been able to have a good set of robust meetings with all the departments. We compiled, excuse me, a really robust set of priorities from folks that is consistent with the platform. We saw some synergies certainly on things like technology needs, certainly on things like employment and recruitment and retention in places like police and fire, certainly the issues that are challenging across the board on transportation, homelessness, a variety of the key policy issues, those also came up as well. We've also been able, in the course of the bi-weekly meetings that we're having with staff at the city manager's office and with BWP, I've identified a couple of issues already that we've had occasion to react on. So we've sent some letters on matters related to hydropower legislation, the nexus between distributed transformer issues and some things that are out there. The other thing I should mention is there have already been some grant opportunities that have come forward with the city that we've been able to apply for as well. And so we've begun to start to think about, now that we have a couple of months under our belt, what's the best way to make sure that we're regularly communicating with you all, whether it's a weekly report, monthly report, what that might be. And then finally, as the mayor knows, Burbank is a very active member of the Southern California Public Power Authority. They organize the annual fly-ins to Washington every February, where we meet with legislators, talk about public power issues, and then go off on our own and have our own individual meetings. So we're beginning the plans for that. Before I turn back over to Charmaine, the one closing thing I would say about 2024, we all know there's a presidential election coming up, there are congressional elections coming up. What I can tell you is, don't buy the hype that it's an election year, so nothing's going to happen. I think there are a lot of opportunities. Members are eager to show results. This has not been the most productive Congress that we have seen in our lifetime. It is approaching perhaps the least. When the calendar turns to an even number, that tends to start to focus folks. There are a number of major pieces of legislation still out there on FAA reauthorization, a farm bill, infrastructure, on a number of other things, appropriations, project permitting reform. So we think there are a lot of opportunities yet for Burbank to shine and for us to pursue and advocate for you. So we're looking forward to an exciting year. Again, we're grateful and honored that you chose us, and we hope you do you proud.
And I'll just close out and say one thing that, you know, I've been with the firm for 30 years, and the one thing that stands out the most for me, particularly as we represent localities, is that's what our firm is, the basis of the foundation of the firm. It was why it started and why it continues. And so for us, we look at everything through the lens of working with the local government and a local community to not only build the community, but also the people that are within that community. Because I also work with a lot of nonprofits for our firm. So again, for us, it's always looking through that lens, the partners that we partner with, the stakeholders that we bring on board. They all know and understand that The Ferguson Group stands for local communities, and that's what drives us every single day. So thank you all.
Great, thank you both so much for being here. Before you go, colleagues, are there any questions or brief comments? Councilmember Mullins.
Just a quick comment. That's music to my ear, local government and focusing on community. So I do appreciate, thank you for saying that. And it was a pleasure meeting you and chatting earlier. So I'm looking forward to see the results of all the good work you do. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, I just want to again wish you both a safe trip back home. We are in very capable hands, and I look forward to seeing both of you in person with the Water and Power team in about a month. All right, safe flight.
Thank you.
Okay, so now is the time for general public comment. And for members of the public who are here, oh, can I get the yellow comment cards, please? Thank you. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card to our city clerk. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business, except for our two public hearings tonight. If you speak to the public hearing items, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. Please also state your name for the record. And for those who are wishing to call in during general public comment tonight, please call now, if you haven't already done so, at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person public comments have been received. I have three cards so far. First up, we'll be hearing from Ron Backs, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening. I gave Kimberly the handouts early so that you can have them all, rather than one minute and present my remarks. Okay, I think I'll have to be back next week to cover this, because of a lot to unpack here. I have to first of all apologize for some of the typographical and grammatical errors, especially the "truefully" that should have been "truthfully." Anyway, we stopped down here about hazard insurance, which the hazard insurance went up 26.7% last year, lawn care 12%, electrical panels spent 6K. And that's because, again, the insurance company didn't like the idea of something, which was our Zinco panels with aluminum busbars. And so they said, you gotta change the panels. I was able to do it for about $200, yeah, $200 a panel, rather than $12,000 a panel, because I being electrical, electronics actually, knew that we could change the aluminum busbars to copper and solve the problem. And I got two minutes left. Okay, so if you take these expenses and you normalize them to the benchmark that has been used, property taxes, trash went up 60%, but it was only about 10% of my expenses. So if you take that and you adjust it, this 83.3% comes down to 8.3%. And that has gone up now, because I had to call Athens today to try and get a larger recycling bin, because the city took my three-yard bin away, and Athens gave me a 65-ballon garel. So that's like 81 cubic feet versus eight cubic feet. It's not being able to fit it in. And hazard insurance was about 25% of property taxes. So that's equivalent to a little over 6% increase. Now, there's other things, is that somebody asked where the money goes. And some goes into operating, which is for a yearly basis or monthly basis. Some goes into escrow, which are yearly expenses. And then some goes into reserves, like for gas, for operating, we have gas, water, trash, et cetera. For escrow, we have hazard insurance, painting, roofing, et cetera. Actually, those should have been a three, in a reserve account. And one of the major ones we have, and I better pick up the pace, I'm running out of time, is unexpected ones like a sewer line. I had a sewer line collapse a few years ago, and you know that was back then, 10 years ago, with 16,000. I have to believe it's about 24,000 now. And I have two sewer lines being attacked by parkway trees. May I see city trees? Okay. Now, the one major expense that we have here that we have not even discussed, and it dawned on me this morning, is that of my silent partners, my federal and state taxes. Okay, property tax amounts to about 6%, whereas the average housing provider, I imagine, is in a 35% total. Can't think of the term right now, tax. So that's quite a bit more. Anyway, thank you for your time. I'll be back next week, because we didn't get the bottom part, like I said. See you later.
Thank you for your comment. We'll see you next Tuesday night. Next, I have Joe Pimienta, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, staff and public. My name is Joe Pimienta. I usually come here to council to speak about the need for more tenant protections in the city of Burbank. Last week, I had the privilege of witnessing or observing the roundtable between tenants and landlords. Opinions of that are my own, but I want to say that it was a great opportunity, and I want to take the moment to say that thank you so much to everyone involved into making that happen. It was a great effort. Again, I have other things to say about it, but for now, I just really want to express gratitude for making that happen. I'm sure that everyone who participated saw a lot of positive things come out of that. However, today, I also want to just bring up the attention that the Walk-Bike Burbank group continues to get together, and we continue to discuss possible ideas for the 20th anniversary of the Chandler Bike Path. We continue to discuss what could be like a really cool thing to happen, since it is on August of this year, and it's already the end of January. And as we all know, time bikes away. Anyways, so we started pitching different ideas, just like where it could take place. We started imagining something that could take place between California to Wethnall, and just making like some kind of promenade type of thing with different people, with different exhibits, invite different social groups that use the Chandler Bike Path, make it, obviously invite the public to participate. You know, even if it's something as simple as cutting a cave for saying that this bike path brings a lot of community members into just socializing. And it would also be a great opportunity to display the history of the making of the bike path. You know, what was Chandler Boulevard before the bike path was there, and what does it look like now, and how that has actually improved the city of Burbank on multiple levels. So yeah, we continue to discuss ideas. We don't have a precise plan per se, but we continue to discuss, like, you know, we continue to just throw ideas around. We would love to hear more input. We would love to hear any kind of suggestions, because again, we know that it's time away. We want to figure out like, well, who could make this happen? And I'm specifically talking about when it comes into either donations, participation, city funding and what have you. Again, nothing specific yet, but just if anybody has anything to add, we would love to hear it. Other than that, just once again, thank you so much for your time. And for those of you who are not aware, today is also the first day, so the first of three days where nationwide we are participating in the counting of our own house neighbors. So for those of you who are watching at home, if you would like to participate, you can still sign up. We are supposedly, here in Burbank, it starts around 8:00 PM. We are meeting at 7:30 by the Community Service Building. So if you would like to participate, please do so, and thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you for your comment and for that important reminder. Next, I have Mark Scroggs.
And everybody's taller than me here tonight. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Scroggs. I'm a local town agent. I just want to continue the conversations we had starting late last fall regarding the local entertainment industry and the strikes, the post-strike world, the possible, God forbid, pre-strike world, because a lot of these productions right now are concerned by IATSE and the Teamsters. So already dealing with stuff that will be done shooting in June, because they don't want to continue and have to pay and have productions go like last time. It is slowly picking up, work is picking up, not as fast as anybody thought. One of my clients, who's also a Teamster and he's a producer, was saying that he is in tier one of the Teamsters, which I would imagine that's the most active group. They're the only ones who've been called back to work so far. Everybody else is waiting. I know a lot of casting directors are waiting, a lot of writers, script readers. Everybody's waiting, it's not moving as quickly as we thought. And more and more shows are cutting back. A lot of this stuff is going to happen anyway, it's just happening a lot faster because of the strikes. It's kind of like the pandemic caused a lot of things to happen faster. Like I said, the Teamsters and IATSE, they're planning to hopefully start talking early March. And I think everybody should be encouraged to make sure they do talk, because last time, I think everybody assumed they would, and people didn't. It's a long story. But I've also been talking with other representatives. We've been getting, I've been getting other people involved about what we can do in our own communities, talking to people. I know I've talked to the vice mayor about like a forum, about having entertainment people, all sorts of people, talk in a group, and other people are doing the same thing in their communities. My client, who's a Teamster, gave me a bunch of ideas today about how you can keep productions here. Other people, somebody who's married to a costumer, gave a bunch of ideas. So there's a lot of stuff that we can do, and I think as us, as the regular people, like I said, we're the people who don't buy the tables at the benefits, we're the ones who, you know, pay for them, that we can start doing and doing and talking. And I know a lot of my peers are starting to do that also. So I just want to let you know that. We're just trying to keep things here, and also adjust the business, because there's, you know, film and television is changing, and it's not going to be that way all, you know, there's like games, podcasts, there's so many other things that we can be focusing on, that we should be focusing on, because that helps the local economy. You hear all the stuff about schools, you hear all the stuff about with the roads, all the tax stuff. It would help if people, you know, were working here who lived here. That's pretty much that. And then, like I said, we've been getting people involved, like community-wise. I'll give them that more later when I have more information. The last thing is just want to plant the flag. 2028 is probably the, Los Angeles is going to host the Olympics. I worked, God, 1984, I was at USC Film School, I worked for the Olympics. I'm sorry. Just keep that in mind, we'll talk about it later.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. We have now completed in-person public comment. For our callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer, and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment, so that we can hear you clearly. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line this evening?
We do, we have one at the moment.
All right, let's send them through.
The first caller is Chris Rosati.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. It's Chris Rosati. I just wanted to bring to your attention a crisis that is brewing that I think we should probably try to head off as it gets worse. The crisis is with insurance and insurance carriers that are mass canceling their policies and pulling out of California. This is devastating for people on fixed incomes, because the companies that are writing insurance are writing them at three and four times the policy. So there was a policy that I was trying to get for a client today, that used to be $1,100, is now $4,800 for homeowners insurance. This is also adding to the housing crisis for people that are trying to purchase a home and can't get insurance to close escrow, or the policy's so much money that they decided not to make the purchase. So I think if we reach out to our local elected and try to get ahead of this before it continues, because I think we're seeing the tip of the iceberg. Me personally, I received a cancellation on my homeowner's policy here in Burbank, and at no fault, no claim, just that the company is no longer writing insurance. It did give me a six-month heads-up, but now I have to find insurance. And I made three calls today to three different, separate insurance brokers, and all of them said the same thing. We're not writing insurance in California. So I'm urging you, I'm urging you to get ahead of this, please. I'm not so concerned about someone like me, I'll figure it out. I'm concerned about our aging population that can't pay four times the rate. It's just not fair to them. So I thank you for taking time to listen, and I just ask you to please make this a priority, because it's steamrolling, it's getting worse and worse. Good night.
Thank you for your comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other callers?
No, we do not.
Okay, there being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, the assistant city manager, and/or our city attorney. Would anyone like to begin? Yes.
I just have a question regarding the Chandler Bike Pass. Are we doing any, the city's doing anything in recognition of the 20th anniversary? I don't know who's.
There has been discussion about doing something, but there's no final plans or anything specific. But we'll come back with an update to council and the community when we have something definitive.
Okay, that would be great, because as they're working on a plan, it would probably complement our plan, or maybe we can work together with the group, or so we don't conflict with each other.
But staff will be doing an update. Otherwise, it's additional agenda items.
I get it, I understand.
Great. All right, I take that is the end of her response. Anyone else? Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all who came out tonight to speak. For Mr. Backs, thank you for continuing to come and share your experiences with us. To Mr. Pimienta, specifically about the walk-bike anniversary. By the way, that's the same month as my birthday too, so I'm so there, whatever happens. I'm so there with my bike, with my e-bike. Mr. Scroggs, thank you for the update on the status of production, the production industry. There's clearly still residual issues from the strike. And I really love your idea of local conversations, so if there's anything I can do to be helpful, let me know. And Mr. Rosati calling in, thank you for the update, and mentioned several times, get ahead of it. I would love to know ideas, hear ideas. I would love to know ideas, hear ideas from the community about how to get ahead of it. So thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes.
Yeah, thank you all for coming down and I just, to Mr. Rosati's point, it's not just homeowners insurance, it's fire, it's flood, it's even automobile insurance has gone up. So yeah, looking into it, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, any comment or question?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you to all of the speakers. Thank you to everybody who participated in the roundtable. I think it was a wonderful experience and thank you for continuing to be here with your advocacy. That's a great idea, Mr. Pimienta, about the white, walk, oh my God, I'm going to butcher it. I always butcher it.
Walk Bike Burbank.
Walk Bike Burbank. I always want to say it backwards because I'm a runner, so sorry I'm putting... So I think that's great and I hope we see some collaboration there and I would love to speak with you further about it. Mr. Scroggs, I very much enjoyed our conversation and I'm looking forward to making that a cornerstone of our city's discussion because the entertainment industry is pivotal for us here, more so than in many parts of the region. So I want to keep that discussion going. I'm excited to hear your further thoughts. I know three minutes is never enough. And to Mr. Rosati, I have been thinking about that too. The insurance costs are going up so much. We have homeowners, we have apartment owners, we have renters, we have people who can no longer afford the insurance that is skyrocketing. We've seen it in all these cases and if folks have ideas, like my colleague, I would like to hear them because it's time we start having that conversation, even if it's not a local one, we can have those conversations with our colleagues and our state and federal partners.
Thank you all for your response. I would just echo, thank you to everyone who came down or phoned in tonight to give your comment. I also just want to mention that we always get a printout of all of the e-commerce that are submitted. I know we don't always go into in-depth explaining those, but I just want folks to know that if you do use the e-comment portal, we read those as well and so we appreciate everyone who participates, however you choose to do so. With regards to Mr. Rosati's comment, Ms. Paget, my suggestion would be maybe we can chat offline. We do have a legislative platform and I think that some of the things outlined in his comment perhaps could be addressed by a letter from the mayor within that platform seeking legislative change. So if you're amenable, we could do that.
Mr. Mayor, I, given that the city attorney had to warn me about not being on topic, that was going to be something I would like to request at the end of the meeting, that we look into writing a letter to our insurance commissioner to urge him to look into this matter. So I'm going to leave it till the last item when I request the letter.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
This is just a preview.
Wait, how come they got to say it and you didn't say anything?
Well, I actually do have a thought on that because I'm referring...
Thank you for merging in, Councilmember Mullins.
Because I'm referring to a previously adopted legislative platform, should it fit? I, but, point well taken. I like to write those letters though. So thank you, everybody, and we will now move to our consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items this evening. Item one is adoption of an ordinance of the council of the city of Burbank amending Burbank municipal code section 2-1-202 relating to compensation of council members. Item two is approval of an additional $394,000 from the California Department of Aging, American Rescue Plan Act to the Contracted Elderly Nutrition Program, Older Americans Act Title Roman numeral 3-C1 and Title Roman numeral 3-C2 Services and amending the adopted fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Item three is adoption of a resolution to approve design and construction services to support the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center solar project, authorize the BWP General Manager to negotiate and execute the design-build contract with Baker Electric and Renewables LLC and authorize the Assistant General Manager of Power Supply or their designee to approve plans and specifications to retain design immunity. And item four is adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2023 grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice for law enforcement, virtual reality training and any future amendments, acceptance of $16,298 in grant funds and amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by appropriating funds.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Yes, Ms. Mullins.
Mr. Mayor, I can move forward and make a motion to approve the consent calendar. However, I do have just a couple of quick questions regarding item number three and if staff, if it's okay, staff can come up and...
Let's take the questions before we do the motion. So if we can get staff up for item three?
Yeah, we have Joseph Lilio, who's our chief financial officer with Burbank Water and Power.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, city council members. My name is Joe Lilio, Chief Financial Officer with Burbank Water and Power. So we do have Mr. Michael Wang, he's the Principal Electrical Engineer, who will be giving this a brief overview, very brief overview of this project.
Great. Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, council members, thank you for having me. I'm going to serve as the project manager for the RITSI solar project. Brief overview of the project is going to be about a 2.8 megawatt solar array on top of the RITSI. We mentioned before, it's the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center. It's on the southeast corner of the airport property, it's where all the rental cars are. And so we're covering the entire roof with solar panels. This is enough capacity for about 700 average homes in Burbank and it's going to fulfill about 0.25% of an unfunded state mandate for carbon-free generation that we've been given. It will provide clean renewable energy to the city and it's going to be in territory so we can avoid the challenges of bringing that energy into the LA basin, which we're seeing a lot of, a lot of utilities in Southern California are having that issue right now. It's part of our, talked about IRP effort for, you know, what is our plan for the future for renewables. And it's going to serve as a great training grounds for our crews as they learn, you know, how to, what are the industry's best practices in making these solar generation facilities and then how to maintain them and such and other things like that. We did choose Baker after a competitive bidding process on this one. We got two responsible bids, proposals for this project and Baker was selected first using a technical evaluation and then afterwards we included a price evaluation and combined the scores and Baker came out ahead. On that one, Baker has 85 years' history of doing successful projects with private and commercial, residential, commercial, large utility scale projects, large commercial projects. They have experience at airports, they have one with Santa Monica Airport right now. And so we're confident that they're going to do a great job here in Burbank and we're looking forward to working with them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Couple of questions and then a quick comment. Are we expecting any type of reimbursement from the federal, the state?
There is IRA funding right now for any renewable generation projects. That's a 30%. It's called a direct payment that we would get and it's available to us. Potential adders also available from federal government, but there is nothing from state.
Okay. And I noticed in the report that these panels are actually made in the USA?
That's right.
Which is really a plus and I applaud Water and Power for choosing to go that route because it further demonstrates our ability to going for more green energy and we're doing our job. The only thing that I wanted, that's the reason I'm asking you to be here, to present this, is the fact that we're not receiving anything from the state. And I think it's really important that we are in the forefront, talking to our legislators to make sure that we receive the acknowledgement and then also the reward for what we're doing to meet our timeline for green energy. So I wanted to point this out and I do applaud you, this was really more informing the public of what's going on. You're doing a great job. I appreciate the fact that you bought the panels American-made and then also that the other part is that we need to be in the forefront with the state, letting them know that we've done our job and hopefully they can include some kind of funding for us in the future to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
Just two quick questions. You said 2.8 megawatts?
Yes, that's right, 2.8 megawatts DC.
That's awesome.
Yes.
And second, just for the public at home, the RITSI is far enough south, this won't affect the construction of the new airport terminal at all?
No, it's very far away, other side of the lining strips.
Great, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or can I get a motion?
I made a motion, so I think we need a second.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, outstanding motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, on one, two, and three, no on four.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes, on all four.
Thank you.
All right, outstanding. We are on to the first of two public hearings for this evening. Now is the time and place for the hearing for project number 23-0003969. This is introduction of an ordinance, not adoption, but introduction of an ordinance to update the existing development standards for art in public places to authorize post-security areas of the Hollywood Burbank Airport as eligible places for public art. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing from members of the council? I will take that as a no. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails and any other documents?
Yes, we do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter and have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, and yes, they have.
Okay, will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the council. My name is Joseph Hungalinan, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department's Planning Division. Tonight, the item before you is a proposed zone tax amendment to modify the Art in Public Places ordinance to classify post-security interior areas of the airport as eligible places for public art. May I have the presentation up, please? Thank you. To provide some background, on November 8, 2016, Burbank voters approved Measure B, an agreement between the city of Burbank and the Burbank Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority with 70% of the vote. The agreement gives the airport authority the right to build a 14 gate, 355,000 square foot replacement passenger terminal for the Hollywood Burbank Airport. The new replacement terminal will enhance the passenger experience while meeting federal aviation administration safety standards regarding runway distance to buildings, incorporate seismic safety and address ADA requirements. The Art in Public Places ordinance is a section of the municipal code that outlines the public art requirements for development projects and development standards of said public art. The ordinance currently limits interior locations for public art to be ones that are designed for use by the general public and are accessible to the public during normal business hours. Despite experiencing high volume of foot traffic from the public, areas like the post-security areas of the airport are not eligible locations for public art. The replacement terminal project has been named Elevate BUR. Elevate BUR would put the airport in compliance with FAA safety standards and provide amenities to its users such as a variety of restaurants and concessions, improved restrooms, larger corridors and waiting areas, and up-to-date facilities for security screenings. Among the amenities proposed by Elevate BUR is the installation of public art in one of the post-security interior areas of the airport accessible to ticketed passengers during business hours. The current Art in Public Places ordinance does not classify post-security interior areas of the airport accessible to ticketed passengers as a place that is accessible to the general public during normal hours and it is therefore not allowable location, not an allowable location for public art. The AIPP ordinance, the Art in Public Places ordinance, must be modified through a zone tax amendment to clearly define that such areas are permissible locations for public art. The ZTA would do just that and would include language specifying post-security areas of the airport as eligible, as eligible, as suitable locations for public art. Here we have, as noted in the red text on the slide, the proposed ZTA language that specified the post-security interior areas of the Hollywood Burbank Airport as eligible locations for public art. So what does this mean for residents and travelers? Public art in the airport will help create an attractive and inviting area that can be enjoyed by airport users and promotes Burbank arts and community positively through new art experienced by the many travelers and Burbank residents visiting the airport. The ZTA to modify the Art in Public Places ordinance is not considered a project under CEQA and is therefore exempt. California Government Code Section 65860 requires that modifications to the zoning code can be, to be consistent with the adopted general plan and the rest of the zoning code. The proposed ZTA is consistent with at least four of the Burbank 2035 general plan land use related goals and policies. In conclusion, the ZTA will modify the Art in Public Places ordinance to allow the airport authority to satisfy part of its art allocation requirement by placing public art in the post-security interior areas of the Hollywood Burbank Airport while maintaining compliance with the zoning code or municipal code. Staff recommends that city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1 of the Burbank Municipal Code to update the existing development standards for art in public places to authorize post-security areas of the Hollywood Burbank Airport as eligible places for public art. This concludes staff's presentation and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you'd like to speak. For those wishing to call in during this public comment period, please call now at Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. So far, our first and only speaker is Andre Dionisian.
I would like to voice my opposition to this zone tax amendment. We have a fixed budget for art in public places and it has to be exactly that. It has to be in a public space. There is a reason that post-security areas of the airport are not included in that definition in the first place, which is that they're not public. You have to be a customer of one of the air carriers in order to view this art that is supposedly public, funded by public dollars and supposed to be for the benefit of the public. I simply don't see how, when we have train stations, three of them, that are all lacking in public art, when I see a bus station in downtown that is also lacking in public art, when we have this supposed intermodal transportation center which also is lacking in public art, also lacking in just, the way it's designed is kind of strange, I'm sure you guys have been there. There are plenty of places, including, I think schools should be, I know, there's something weird, I'm not entirely sure where the eligibility comes, whether it comes to Burbank Unified and the district being separate, but schools would be a fantastic place to pour our resources into and parks and libraries. I can keep going and I don't think we should be taking these finite resources and putting them to bolster a service that is not for all Burbank residents, it's for a subset of Burbank residents, which I think is in essence not public. And that's my thoughts anyway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't have any other cards, so we will now consider the in-person public comment period completed for this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
No, we have no callers.
Okay, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. At this point, would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments or responsive comments?
No further comments, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
I would like to respond to a comment.
Sure.
I appreciate Mr. Dionisian's comment. We also had a comment, written comment on this subject in advance of this hearing likening the fees to taxes. And so to clarify for the record, the... Uh, and so to clarify for the record, um, the budget of the art in public, uh, places actually comes from private development. The city does not appropriate those funds out of taxes. Um, they're actually appropriated from the developers. The city only gets the funds when the developers pay them in lieu of putting the art on premises. So the ordinance is actually a development standard that imposes upon the developer a formula based upon the construction costs, which, uh, must result in public art on their premises. Uh, a minimum of 50% of the, um, art installation, the value of the art installation must be installed on the exterior premises of the building, and 50% of the art may be installed on public interior spaces. So this is, um, the city, no money passes through the city's hands if a project developer is capable of, uh, fully expending those funds on their own project site. So, um, in this, and, and they make a proposal to the Art in Public Places Committee for them to basically give some general approval of the installation. So the proposed ordinance merely allows the airport to include the post TSA or the ticketed passenger area. Uh, within that 50% that may be done in interior spaces includes the TSA. Part of it is, because this is a, in excess of a billion-dollar project, the art budget that they have to self-fund is substantial. Likewise, somewhere in the neighborhood of 7 million passengers a year go through the TSA, uh, and come out of TSA, and so those areas are kind of quasi-public in that sense that our visitors will, it's kind of a gateway to the city, and so it seemed reasonable to staff to honor this request to include the post TSA, it's up to the discretion of the council, but that's only for 50% of their self-funded public art. Again, it's a development standard that applies, uh, based upon the nature of their proposal, uh, and, and that's basically how it functions. So that's both as to the issue that it's a city, uh, limited city budget, and also as to the issue of a tax. It's not, there's also exemptions in the ordinance subsection K, uh, for smaller, uh, projects, residential projects, small commercial buildings. So not every project has to do this, but it's a development, a standard that applies to projects over a certain threshold.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Um, so colleagues, let's begin with questions only, and then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll deliberate. So does the council have any questions of staff?
Uh, yes. Uh, yeah, uh, um, Mr. City Attorney, you mentioned subsection K, I didn't see that in here, do you know where, what page that's on?
Well, they, I don't, is the entire, I don't know that the entire text of, uh, Section 10-1-1114 is in here.
If you have it, do you mind just reading it?
That, that is correct, so the subsection K is only in the municipal code, since the ZTA is only like an insertion of one, uh, one sentence in the location subsection in the Art in Public Places Ordinance, that was the only section that we included in the.
So, for the benefit of the council, um, the section that we're talking about, and it is, uh, expressly referenced in the, the proposed ordinance before you, it is municipal code, Section 10-1-1114, that's Title 10, um, and there are, uh, subparts A through L, and subpart K is entitled Development Projects Exempt From This Section, that is the Art in Public Places, and the listed exemptions are for childcare centers, single-family homes, subdivisions with four or fewer dwelling units, commercial and industrial projects with a building valuation as defined by this subsection of $500,000 or less, multifamily residential projects with a building valuation of $1.5 million or less, any affordable unit development projects funded or assisted by the housing authority, uh, any capital, in, public capital improvement projects for which legal restrictions preclude the application of this section, mechanical plumbing, electrical systems upgrades, structural seismic upgrades, modifications for disabled access, building remodeling, building additions, and related activities where the building valuation is not increased by more than 50%, remodeling, repair, reconstruction of structures that have been damaged by fire, flood, wind, earthquake, or other natural causes, nonprofit 501(c)(3) social service institution construction projects, and finally, any building built on a portion of a site which is completely screened from view by, uh, from adjacent public right-of-way, or from those portions of the site open to the general public, provided that the height of the building does not exceed the height of buildings that screen it.
Okay, that's a long section, thank you for reading, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal, again. Uh, any other questions? Please, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I have a few questions about this, uh, project, thank you for the presentation about this, um, public hearing. Um, so just to reiterate so I'm clear, is that when a project is, uh, required to have public art, they are allowed to have up to 50% interior, uh, that, that art being interior inside the, the building, right? Is that correct?
So, um, Joseph Pangalinen, um, CDD, so, yeah, so the, the development standards for Art in Public Places require at least 50% of the provided public art has to be exterior, and then whatever remaining balance could be interior.
Okay, could it also be, also, exterior as well, could 100%?
Correct, it could be completely exterior.
Great. And so what, what the airport is asking for is an exception, well, to, to define the entire interior of the airport as interior, even past the TSA check.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, are there other airports that have public art in post TSA areas?
So there are, uh, I did some research and reached out to some other, um, cities that do have airports, um, they, they, they exist, but, um, I think in, in a lot of their cases, it's not necessarily related to a, um, an art allocation requirement, they're just, there is provided amenity.
Okay, got it, great. And, um, when, uh, there is a requirement for a certain amount of public art, is that requirement a space-based requirement, or a money?
It's a value-based, like money, yeah.
Value-based, okay. So it could take a small space if it was a very high-value art, for example?
That's correct.
Just saying, okay.
You asking for the monolista to come?
Yeah, that's a good example. You know, that's a good idea. I actually have a comment later on today on our reports, I might, it might be, cover that. Um, let's see, and to, uh, a question, one of the comment, the commenter asked one of the questions about why, why at the airport do we require art of places, or why is this, why is this part of this, uh, process, whereas we don't have that same requirement at bus stops, metro stations, schools, parks, et cetera? How are those different?
So, excuse me, Scott Plam, Planning Manager, um, just to answer that question, um, this is driven by developer money, as Mr. McDougal indicated, so whenever a developer builds a project, then, um, developer has to contribute, if they meet the requirements of the code, to that, whereas with bus stations, it's publicly funded, um, and I believe there is that?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. There is public art at the downtown Burbank MetroLink station. Uh, the ritzy requires public art and has, since it was built, it is not installed, and they have been, for a very long time, working with Marissa Garcia, the Park and Rec Department, and the Art in Public Places Committee to get that, and I think it's coming August, so, uh, we're, we're close. Uh, we had intended to, um, install kind of artsy canopies at the North MetroLink Station, which is the newest station next to Avion. Those are sort of value-engineered out, um, as often happens with such projects, and the other MetroLink Station is old and tired, and we're working with all the agencies involved to at least get it fancied up a bit, but, uh, no public art there. Uh, I'd be happy getting, getting it repaved and, and trash picked up, but yeah, so there is some public art in our transportation infrastructure.
Oh, could I ask a follow-up to that?
That's good, go ahead.
I meant, uh.
That's probably the same one, but go ahead.
All right, what's your go, go ahead.
I was gonna, look, go.
Why, why don't we have you go first, and then you, so, uh, yeah.
I'll say, what's the mechanism for producing that public art at the airport versus the mechanism producing that public art at the MetroLink Station? In the sense of like funding and, and, you know, how we get the money to do it, et cetera?
It was just, I believe, well, the MetroLink Station was so long ago, I believe it was just part of the, the, the project budget, Marissa can answer that.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Schultz, um, councilmembers, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation. So the Art in Public Places Ordinance, um, was adopted in 1996. Since 1996, any city projects, new construction projects have complied with the Art in Public Places Ordinance. There haven't been too many, um, uh, new construction projects in, in the city, but those that have been built, um, have conformed, uh, with the Art in Public Places Ordinance. So we have, uh, the police-fire building has public art, community services building, Stow Nature Center, so those have, I, I don't know how old, and I know the MetroLink Station does have public art, I don't know how old the, um, uh, Metro Station is over by the airport, um, but my guess is it's probably pre-1996, I, I could be, uh, incorrect, or it was less than $500,000, um, but, um, we do, um, all of our projects do, uh, we do include public art in our budget for new construction, as required.
The Airport Station North, sorry, I believe that was constructed with a, a cooperative agreement, interagency agreement with Metro, I think they put most of the money, and it's also their right-of-way, uh, so I think that had a lot to do with it, there were a lot of restrictions and, um, agreements between, between different parties. Part of that was because I think they're mothballing a different station in favor of the Airport, uh, North Station. So it is a, it is a relatively new station, I would say, within the last five years, um, but it was a, uh, MetroLink-initiated station, I think that might drive part of that.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
One more thing to clarify, the request before you tonight was initiated by the airport, okay, so it's a very narrowly-focused zone tax amendment, I know there's a lot of conversation about the Art in Public Places Ordinance itself.
Right.
Uh, many people wanted to do all things for all people, uh, but tonight, we're just asking for, um, the request that was made to amend it for this, and if there's any, um, desire to look at that ordinance further, we're happy to do that at a later date.
And I would supplement Mr. Prescott's response with, this request coming forward expeditiously was critical to the airport because they're in the midst of engineering, and made a difference how they engineered the roofing structures, and they, they had to know whether this was gonna at least proceed to council or not in time to account for it in the engineering of their project.
Do you still have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm glad you asked that question, because I was gonna ask that, but with this follow-up. The bus terminals, the MetroLink stations that we currently have, if they were built today, would they also be required to have all of their interior 50% prior to the gate?
Um, the, all those facility, uh, no. Joseph Pangalinen, CDD, so, um, Councilmember Anthony, the, all those facilities are all exterior, so, I mean, if they were to be rebuilt, to have the, ex, interior spaces, the code would allow for that, but given that, it would have, uh, as I said, at least 50% of that, the value of the art allocation has to be on exterior, uh, the exterior part of those.
Right, but I'm saying if they were built again today, and they had an interior, could a bus or a train station use the post-ticketing as part of the interior?
Yes, if, yeah, as, oh, sorry, as long as it's not public.
I see that, I see your trick.
Welcome back, Mr. Prescott.
Mr. Mayor. The airport is unique, it has security, TSA, right? So the, a MetroLink Station might have interior space, uh, that they might be able to put some of their public art in, uh, as long as it's accessible to the public, but that's under the, the curtain ordinance anyway, right? You can put up to 50% interior, what we're, what the airport is asking for is that post-TSA, right? The post-security, which, as Mr. McDougal pointed out, more people will see the public art post-security than most of the public art in the city, millions, in fact.
Yeah.
The reason, if, if I could, the reason I ask this question is, there are potentially new transit stops coming, high-speed rail, if it ever gets its acting gear, that would have space post-ticketing that isn't accessible.
Yes, I, I've only been, so I've only been, uh, to a couple train stations, and they don't have a similar, they have not had to date, everything's could change, who knows? Um, they don't have a similar, um, security checkpoint that, like the airports do, TSA.
Okay.
But I, I suppose we would have to address it then, because this one's very specific to the, the airport.
Yes, don't, don't leave.
All right.
I have a follow-up to the follow-up.
Thank you, but I'm gonna let Councilmember Takashi finish her line of questioning, then Councilmember Mullins, then the Vice Mayor.
Don't go away, Mr. Prescott. Okay, so what, again, to, to really make this, I think to follow up on what you're trying to achieve here, and that question is that this is a very specific card out, carve-out for a very specific project, and that if there's a future project that perhaps has a, you know, a comparable issue, that there would have to be another discussion for that project in the future, whatever that may be, right? Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get at, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just one more process question, okay, so if, if we approve this tonight, and we do allow for, uh, public art to be past TSA, would anything installed in that area go through the same process through the Public Arts Commission and all of the checking and everything that any other public art would go through?
That is correct, it would be subject to the same processes.
Okay, including, for example, would it allow for, um, uh, public art that could be changed out, like say, every year or two, a new installation came in and moved in and out, or does it have to be permanent all the time?
Uh, it allows, uh, sorry, uh, the Art in Public Places, uh, ordinance does allow for like rotational, um.
Okay, and what about interactive art, or any kind of future potential, um, art that may be different than what we can imagine right now?
Well, so the Art in Public Places Ordinance, like, specifies that specific art types, um, but yeah, if, if those art types are built and they could be interacted with, then, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah.
I just, again, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation, I want to clarify that currently the ordinance does not allow for rotating art. It, it specifically states that it has to be permanent art.
Okay.
But it can be, and, sorry, to your second question, it can be interactive.
Right, so it's okay if I have a follow-up question for the, the, the permanent art? So when it's permanent, meaning that it's like, permanent never can be different, or permanent as in it's attached permanently to, you know, to the structure of the building, but it can change to a different piece of art that's permanently attached to the building as long as it goes through the process of the, uh, Arts Commission, or is it kind of a gray area, or?
It does not, uh, well, there is a process by which if the art, um, it's intended for it to be permanent, like, forever.
Got it, okay.
But there is, um, a, uh, the, the ordinance does allow for, if the art needs to be changed, there's a process by which the art, uh, the process by which that can, uh, happen, but it's not, it wasn't intended for it to be, uh, like a rotating art sculpture garden, for example.
Okay, great.
If I could supplement, it's, um, this is an important issue, because this is a development standard. We don't have development standards that require the developer to continually reperform throughout time. So the point is that when they build the project, ritzy notwithstanding, within some reasonable amount of time, they accomplish the development standard, or they pay the in lieu fee, which is what then the Art in Public Places, um, Commission then has some funds, you know, to, to do public art elsewhere. Um, but it's that the development standard is completed, and then the development gets a sign-off that it's met all of their development standards. So we wouldn't, it, it's certainly, uh, good for discussion, but there's a practical reason why we want them to be able to perform the development standard and then move on. Um, if, for instance, uh, I understand that, um, for instance, LAX may have many different types of art, some of which may be rotational, that requires administration, and it would require probably administration by the city. If it's a government, um, building, that's easy to administer, but it's a different thing to tell, uh, you know, one of our, our private developments, um, that, um, we have to come in and somehow keep a tether to their project to administer that, or that they have to hire staff to do that. So, um, part of it is the, the, the ability to demonstrate that they've completed it, and, and we can move on.
Right, okay. So if, if there was a desire for, because that, some of the community has voiced a desire, um, at the meetings about rotating art within the airport, so if there was a desire for that, potentially it might be outside of the scope of what we're talking about here, and that would be an, an internal project that they would do on separately?
Yeah, so they received a development agreement vesting them to build their to build their entitlement within the term of the development agreement, subject to the standards in place at the time the agreement was approved, which is the current ordinance with the exception that you're being asked to approve this evening. So if you were to come up with a future amendment, it would not apply to the airport. It's also extra difficult to apply standards to the airport, because they are another governmental body. And after we made our approvals, the voters had to approve it, and then the FAA had to approve it, which is why this is kind of a generational type of project. But it's entirely possible that if the public wanted rotational art exhibits, that there are likely other projects that the city will be initiating, where those kinds of opportunities could be made available, and would be much easier for the city to manage.
Got it, great. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you. My question was relating to what Councilmember Anthony said earlier, and staff answered in regards to the new buildings, or, let's say, a new metro station. The key point here is $500,000? The project has to be a $500,000 project? If it's less than that, then there's no arts displayed. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly and to discuss it, because I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that just because there's gonna be a new station, that we're automatically gonna get art displayed in there. So the other maybe clarifying point that I want to make, the airport's still planning on satisfying the 50% minimum art allocation in the outdoor area? Is that correct? Which is not, it's in the ticket area?
That's, sorry, you're referring to the exterior, right? The 50% to the exterior?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so they will be art displayed in that area that would be by the airport?
As in outside of, like, the building, not?
Not inside where the ticket area is.
If it was in ticketing, that would be out of the not-to-exceed-50% interior. So all we're doing is, that would be out of their not-to-exceed-50% interior, and then, you know, they could balance from that 50% in ticketing, which is accessible to non-ticketed passengers or the ticketed passenger behind TSA. But the minimum 50% has to be basically outside the doors of the building, somewhere in that exterior area.
Okay, so they will, I mean, I want the public to know that there will be art also displayed outside that will be provided by the airport.
Correct, and just to make the council aware, on the 16th, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation. On the 16th, last week, the Art in Public Places Committee did meet, and they did approve the exterior art for the airport, which was valued at over $1 million. So there is that art component that's already been approved, and it's pretty cool. So they've already, they're already moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Just one. So I know the Arts in Public Places Ordinance was created in 96, and it's had seven amendments since, the latest one being in 2020. Of those, have any been for exemptions like this? Or is this, I know we've mentioned this particular, but have we exempted anybody else or created any kind of carve-out for anybody else?
Scott Plumb, Planning Manager, since I've been here and looking at history, I'm not aware of it. The last one was with regards to how we calculated art in public places. That was the last one in 2020. I don't know if Marissa may have anything else?
We did do one where we actually had a request from our sister city, Incheon, where they wanted to gift us a public art, an art installation. And we did come to council and request council consideration of doing something similar. So that's like a special carve-out. I don't say carve-out, but that was something unique. That was in direct response to where we allowed, council did allow the use of public art funds to to fabricate an art installation that we then shipped to a sister city. And in exchange, we received an art installation of equal value that we installed here, which is the piece Mutualism, which is over at Northwest Library.
Thank you for that, and I only say that to highlight how specific and how unique this is. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, one last question. And see if you can follow along with me here. The Red Line Amendment is just one sentence. It's got a subordinate clause, but the main clause says, "Post-security interior areas of the airport accessible to ticketed passengers during normal business hours shall also qualify as permissible interior locations to place the balance of the minimum allocation of the public art." It's a very small sentence, and I appreciate it. My question to staff is, is there any legal reason or any giant hurdle that we see in front of us if we can't just include bus stops and train stations in that one sentence? The reason I ask, and the reason I ask, at some point in the future, we may get a larger interior ticketed station trains or bus hub. And I'm just trying to save staff time coming back to us. The airport commission is very good at finding this stuff. I'm not exactly sure that a future project will also red-flag this to bring a ZTA amendment to us to go through this whole process again. So that's my question.
Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez in council, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director, we totally hear you. And there were members of the public at the Planning Commission meeting that made up, had a lot of questions of things that they wanted to maybe tweak with the regulations. What I would suggest, and I think some of the feedback you got on the urgency ordinance, was the desire for the public to, whenever possible, and not in the case of an emergency, to follow our established process of having a zone text amendment be vetted by the Planning Commission before it come to council. This would be a substantive change to the code that the Planning Commission did not consider. So what I would say is, really good ideas, there's a lot of discussion. It sounds like you want to, collectively, the community wants to have a go at the public arts. And I would suggest that we could do that as a subsequent round for the zone text amendment. And to be quite honest with you, so that the commission could also vet that, and their subject matter experts, so that we could consider all of it and get something to you that, as you've always said, robust public engagement and vetting by the public, so that when it gets to you, it's a routine decision. I would hope that we can continue that effort, so that's what I would suggest.
All right. Well, great questioning, everybody. I think we got like four or five departments looped in there. That was fantastic. I got two very quick ones. Just to clarify, so tonight, we are introducing the ordinance. It would come back next Tuesday for adoption on the consent calendar, I assume?
Scott Plumb, Planning Manager, we'd be coming back for a second reading on the 13th of February.
Oh, February 13th, okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
And then, what is the current balance of the Arts in Public Places Fund? If anyone has that information handy? I see Ms. Garcia coming on up.
I apologize, I don't have a current balance.
Ballpark figure.
Probably $800,000 right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have some, I know the Art in Public Places Committee is considering a couple of projects. We're just looking at staff capacity to get those projects off the ground. But yeah, that's currently what we have in the fund right now.
Great, thank you, Ms. Garcia.
The Mona Lisa's $860 million, so.
Well, you know, we got enough for, now it's not a down payment, no. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing no questions, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Anyone?
If we're good to go, I see heads nodding. I'd like to just introduce the motion.
This is gonna be seen by 7 million people that visit our Burbank Airport, including ourselves when we travel, so.
Well, I don't know if they'll see the ordinance, but they'll see the art.
Not the ordinance, I didn't say the ordinance, the art. They will be seeing that piece of art.
But they might see the ordinance, you don't know.
Well, you know, they will see your picture on the wall, because you're the mayor. So that's for sure.
All right, we got a motion, go for it.
Anyways, I move that we introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1 zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to update the existing development standards for art in public places to authorize post-security areas of the Hollywood Burbank Airport as eligible places for public art.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's call the roll.
Final discussion, is that all right?
Please.
I just want to say, Mr. Dan Nusian, I had the exact same concern when I read this. I had the opposite response, not to shut this down, but to expand it. And I'm looking forward to future post-security gate areas that we can include public art in, where thousands, if not millions, of people will be able to see that art. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Any other discussion?
I just briefly wanted to add to Councilmember Mullins's comment about who's gonna see this public art, because I don't know about you, but when I go to the airport and I'm dropping somebody off or picking them up, I'm not really looking at the art outside and trying to find my person. And if I am, it's for a very short time. And then, inside, really isn't a lot of traffic, a lot of people moving about before the ticketing. And then after the ticketing, you sit there, wait for an hour. So I think that's a number of people, but it's also like eyes being able to enjoy it. So in a way, this is even a better, I think it's a better place to put the art. And I'm glad to be able that we can support the airport to allow that, so more folks can enjoy the art for longer periods of time while they're not stressed looking for the person to pick up at the airport.
Thank you both, any other comment? Okay, Ms. Clark, let's call the roll.
Sorry, Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, good work, everybody. All right, so now we are on to our next public hearing, our final item of the night. This is the time and place for the hearing on project number 23-12398, Adoption of an Extension of an Urgency Ordinance, Extending Interim Development Standards in Response to Senate Bill 423, which added California Government Code Section 65913.4 subdivision R and 10-day report. Before we begin, are there any disclosures from the council related to this hearing? For the record, I see no positive response. Have any city council members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person regarding the matter?
Mr. Mayor, just emails encouraging us to vote for the ordinance tonight. So just responding, saying thank you.
Perfect, okay, I don't see anything else, great. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter? And have they been provided to all members of the city council?
Yes, and yes.
And I can see she is ready to go. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the council. My name is Amanda Landry, Principal Planner in CDD Planning. And for your consideration, tonight is an extension of an urgency ordinance establishing interim development standards in response to SB 423. May I have the presentation, please? On October 11th, 2023, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill SB 423, amending California Government Code Section 65913.4, commonly referred to as SB 35. And this is relating to streamlined ministerial approval procedures for multifamily housing projects. SB 423 went into effect on January 1st, 2024. And among the changes included in SB 423 is the establishment of a temporary exemption from the streamlined ministerial approval process for multifamily housing projects proposed on qualified sites. Qualified sites are those that satisfy the following criteria. One, that the site is within an equine or equestrian district designated by a general plan, specific plan, or master plan. As of January 1st, 2024, the general plan applicable to the site contains and has contained for five or more years an equine or equestrian district designation where the site is located. Number three, as of January 1st, 2024, the equine or equestrian district applicable to the site is not zoned to include residential uses, but authorizes residential uses with a conditionally used permit, or a CUP. And four, that the local government jurisdiction has a state law compliant adopted housing element. The only equine or equestrian district designated within the city is the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation, identified in the land use element of the Burbank 2035 General Plan. Per the Burbank 2035 General Plan, within the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation, residential density is allowed on any site with the term discretionary approval. This is also specified in the General Plan Consistency Tables listed throughout Title 10 of the Burbank Municipal Code. However, the phrase discretionary approval is not currently defined anywhere in the General Plan or the Burbank Municipal Code. And although a conditionally used permit is a type of discretionary approval, the phrase that our city uses of discretionary approval is not consistent with the CUP requirement as specified in SB 423, and the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation was not eligible. For reference, the brown properties on this map are the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation. So to ensure that the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designated properties could qualify for these, as a qualified site under SB 423, on December 12th, 2023, the City Council adopted an urgency ordinance which clarified that the term with discretionary approval meant with a conditionally used permit for any site within the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation. The initial, the urgency ordinance immediately went into effect for an initial 45-day period, and staff continued to work on the preparation of the Burbank Rancho Neighborhood Specific Plan. An extension of the urgency ordinance is exempt from CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, as its effects were addressed in the Program EIR for the Burbank 2035 General Plan. Charter Section 500 authorizes the City Council to adopt an extension of an urgency ordinance by a four-fifths vote, if necessary, as an emergency measure for preserving the public health, safety, and general welfare. In addition, Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11996 authorizes the City Council to adopt interim zoning ordinances as an urgency measure to protect public safety, health, and welfare, while the Planning Commission studies changes to zones, permitted uses, or property development standards. The proposed extension of the urgency ordinance would continue the interim modifications to the city's existing development standards previously approved, and enable properties within the Rancho Commercial Land Use Designation to qualify for the temporary exemption from the state-mandated streamlined ministerial reviews as specified in SB 423. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council adopt an extension of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank establishing interim development standards in response to Senate Bill 423 via a four-fifths vote. The extension of the urgency ordinance would be effective for 10 months and 15 days, for a total time of one year. And before that time is up, staff would be able to bring back to the City Council follow-up extension ordinance to extend that for up to one more additional year. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Landry. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you'd like to speak. And for those wishing to call in during tonight's public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. So far, my first and only card is Veronica Christensen. And once you're up at the podium and settled, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Christensen, and as a resident of the Burbank Rancho, I support and urge the extension of the urgency ordinance. This extension is absolutely necessary in order for the Rancho to be protected from the streamlined ministerial review process of SB 35 projects, while staff is considering and conducting the community workshops, meetings, and public hearings vital to the development of objective standards the Rancho needs, but currently does not have. And on a personal note, I would just like to say that, to please, don't let greed, profit, and avarice be the determining factors for what's best for our city and for our community. To paraphrase Mayor Schultz, we all need to act responsibly for the betterment of life in Burbank. And I just really think that you all know how I and some of the others in my group feel. And I just really think that you all know how I and some of the others in my group feel about the development that is going on, and how important it is to really consider the consequences of what's happening in that community. The dangers, the congestion, all of the resulting problems need to be considered, which is why this extension is so important. Everything needs to be considered. Actions have ramifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, I don't have any other cards in hand, so we have completed in-person public comment for this hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
We have one caller on the line at the moment.
Okay, send them through.
The first caller is Jean Schonberger.
Hi, Jean, you're on with the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm calling to urge you to adopt this extension of the emergency ordinance to try to support the Rancho for as long as possible to utilize these newly enacted provisions. As you're probably all aware, one of the properties that is an SB 35 property was the subject of yet another SB 35 application just prior to the end of December, just before these rules went into effect on January 1st, 2024. This demonstrates yet again the opportunistic developers will take advantage of any opportunity to try to bring proposals to the Rancho. So we really urge you to please adopt this ordinance, and also to expedite to the extent possible within staff schedules moving forward with the Rancho Master Plan, so that we can have more active engagement with the community and the council and the rest of the city on how to better protect our area. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment, and you too. Any other callers this evening?
Yes, we have one more caller in the queue.
Great, send them through.
My name is... Hi.
The next caller is Karen Pavlicek.
Hi, Karen, you're on with the council.
Hi there. I'm calling to basically oppose the residential multi-use development on Mariposa, because the Rancho is a historical neighborhood, and it just is going to destroy the character of the neighborhood. Furthermore, it poses a safety risk to all of the horses and equestrians who use the bridge across the river, and just the general neighborhood. It's a very, very special neighborhood, and it's already congested. Riverside Drive is not safe to begin with, and it's just out of character. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That was our last caller.
Okay. Thank you to everyone who commented. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further or responsive comments?
Good evening, I'm there. Yes, I just wanted to respond to a couple of the written comments that were provided in advance of the hearing. We did see a lot of support from the Rancho community, and staff is just wanting to reiterate we're happy and excited to start working with that community as soon as possible. And to that effect, we are working on our RFP in a fleshed-out scope of work to ensure that we're going to have a project that addresses all of the concerns that have come up. And then we have also, I just wanted to respond to one other piece of correspondence that we received that was similar to a comment that was provided back in December, just kind of questioning the validity of this process. But it's staff's position that in the absence of a future lawsuit proving that we are violating some sort of state law, we stand behind this ordinance and its findings and its justifications, and we disagree with that commenter.
Thank you very much for the response. So, council, same drill. Questions first, deliberation. Oh, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to kind of expand upon Ms. Landry's response to comments. Specifically, we received a letter late today from Mr. Dave Rand, who's an attorney representing projects in the Rancho. The letter came from the law firm Land Pastor &amp; Nelson. It's very similar to the letter they submitted when council adopted the ordinance on December the 12th. It specifically alleges that the ordinance, an extension of the ordinance violates the Housing Crisis Act by creating a, imposing a new development policy or standard, that there are insufficient findings under Charter Section 500, the city's urgency ordinance text specifically, and also challenging the ordinance as not being within the legislative intent of SB 423. So, as highlighted in Ms. Landry's presentation, and as set forth in the ordinance before you, this draft ordinance does not create any new limitation. In fact, our general plan already imposes a discretionary approval. This ordinance simply clarifies that for the Rancho Commercial District, that discretionary entitlement is a conditional use permit, which we believe is entirely consistent with SB 423 and the intent of SB 423, which was to put a halt on development, affording cities the time to update their general plans, their plans, which the city is doing, with the RFP at council's direction to update the Rancho Master Plan as well. With regard to the findings, I would direct you to finding I and J in your ordinance, which starts on attachment page, attachment 1-2 through page 1-4, which set forth the basis for the need to impose the CUP requirement consistent with SB 423 on development in the equestrian zone known as Rancho Commercial.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. I was going to say the same thing, so I'm so glad that you covered it all. With that said, questions first, then we'll go to deliberation. Who would like to lead us off with que...? Yes, please.
I have just one question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the comment. I also, in addition to the responses that you've given, I'm wondering if we could also respond a little bit to some of the other comments we received in emails, in addition, also with one of our phone calls, concerned about the current construction or currently approved project. Does this, tonight, if we were to approve this, would it have any effect whatsoever on the current, any previously approved projects, including the current one they were talking about in the comments earlier?
This ordinance has no effect on previously approved projects. Those projects were found to be consistent. The word approval is kind of a generic term. In this case, under SB 35, all the city is doing is finding that the proposal is consistent with the objective standards. Otherwise, SB 35 considers these by right projects. Each of the projects that have been approved, they are subject only to the objective standards in place at the time the notices of intent were filed, which for most of these projects was actually back in 2022. And it took, you know, through subsequent review of applications, many of those were approved in 2022 and 2023. It does also not apply to the subsequent application filed for 910 South Mariposa, as that was filed before the effective date. Notwithstanding the fact that the city had adopted an urgency ordinance, that urgency ordinance is to take advantage of the SB 423 amendments, which were not effective until January 1st. So that application that was submitted is processed in accordance with the rules in effect on December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing no questions, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will deliberate. What is the council's pleasure?
Well...
Yes?
We need a four-fifths vote to keep this going, and we already picked it before. It does have a lot of hurdles to this. We need to... I don't know what's going on. Is all the mic close on the other? I'll just talk later. We've already approved it before. Obviously, we did that. And there's a lot of hurdles on this. We have to have it approved in the housing plan of the state. We are following the guidelines set for the SB 423, which means we have to...
To have discretionary approval and the CUP available. And so we need to put those in, otherwise SB 423 is not going to apply in the Rancho area. So, you know, I'm all for it. Any other comments? Yes?
I'm going to make the very sophisticated comment that this is a no-brainer.
I don't know what else to say after that comment. Yes, absolutely. I mean, we did, like everyone else said, we did approve it back in December. It is no-brainer. I'm 100% supportive and for it, so we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. Comments, Vice Mayor?
No, 100%. Let's do it. I'm going to move.
The, before you do, I'll just say, I, despite the humor, I actually fully agree with the city attorney's comments on this. I respectfully disagree with the public comment from Mr. Rand. I will just say, for the sake of the record, I concur entirely with the analysis that Mr. McDougal provided. I think this is something that was, is within our power to do, and we have a responsibility to do it. And I'll be proudly supporting the motion as well.
Oh, right. With that, I move that we adopt an extension of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank, establishing interim development standards in response to Senate Bill 423 via a four-fifths vote.
Second. Second. Go for it.
I heard a second and maybe a third. Any other discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Good work, everybody, and thank you again to our commenters. All right, so as a reminder to my colleagues, we now have condensed our reporting out to just one period, so a whole lot easier. We will now hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and other community events. Who'd like to begin? How about Councilmember Mullins? She looks so eager to do it. I'm going to call on people.
I was actually sitting back, waiting for everybody else, but...
You've had a day. You're cheering from all sides.
I know.
I'm just treating you like my law professor would.
I think he's, because I'm sitting on this side, it's hard for him. All right, so I'll report out. January 10th, I met with Jamie Keizer, our Chamber Executive Director, to chat about some concerns for business communities just in general. It was a very good, productive meeting. Also, the same evening, I went to the Armenian Relief Society of Western USA, and they had a meet-and-greet event that talked about the Armenian Relief Society and all the great work that they do for the city of Burbank and Glendale and our surrounding cities. On January 11th, I had a Zoom call with Mr. D. Wolf, talked about some concerns and issues also in the community. Great information, a lot of great ideas. Really enjoyed talking with him, so we'll keep the dialogue going. And on January 22nd, I attended Transportation Commission meeting. And we, the commission discussed the BRT. And first topic took about two and a half hours, close to two and a half hours. So it was a really lengthy discussion, but it was, it was good. Then right after that, went to the Armenian National Committee, Burbank Armenian Christmas Gathering, which I saw most of you there. So it was a great event. Thanks to the ANCA for their putting this on annually and inviting us. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Councilmember Anthony?
All right, I had some fun. I attended some very interesting things the last couple of weeks. On Friday, the 12th, I, I attended the, the questioning of former Sheriff Villanueva, which was very interesting, countywide sheriff. Lot of stuff coming out about what's happening countywide. On the 14th, I took a march with the local Burbank Scout Troop 201 up behind JPL in the Pasadena foothills. It was very nice. On the 15th, attended the Martin Luther Jr. Annual Breakfast. That was fun. Saw everybody there. The Burbank Community YMCA Youth and Government Hearing Night was on the 16th, right here in these chambers. So that was, that was very fun to see those kids. On the 19th, I attended a walkout with the LA Times, a one-day walkout. And our government oversight is having some interesting changes there at the LA Times. The January 22nd Transportation Commission meeting, where a couple of people were there. And then, and today, we, I met our federal legislative consultants that we saw earlier tonight, and the Ferguson Group, they were very nice. Okay.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Takahashi?
Thank you. I didn't realize how busy my calendar was. I got the list. I had some pretty interesting meetings as well. And one of them was attending our, the Valley Economic Alliance event, Our Region, Our Future, is an economic overview of the region, which is always interesting. On Friday, January 12th, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for Claytivity Pottery Studio, which, if you have not been there yet, is so cool. It's a huge studio, open 24/7, and if you're a member. And you can come in for classes and just use the wheels and just do pottery and use the oven there. It's great. And a double benefit of it is it was our mayor's first ribbon cutting since he was mayor, so I got to witness that, which was pretty exciting. Let's see, on Tuesday, January 16th, I had the extreme pleasure of attending the Burbank Community YMCA Youth and Government Bill Hearing Night. That is so great to see these chairs filled with high schoolers, all debating very interesting issues, and talking about it and voting on it and interacting with the audience. All the parents were out in the audience, and that was just a joy. So I was really happy to be able to attend that. And then on the 18th, I was able to attend for the first time the new committee that I was assigned to, the CalCity's Community Services Committee. And that's an advocacy committee, and it advocates up, you know, to the state, state level. And the three topics that we're focusing on this year is homelessness, aging, and emergency response. And I was able to advocate, in that group, I was able to advocate to incorporate behavioral health and emotional health within all of those categories, to make sure there's an emphasis in all those. So that's going to be included as well. The same day, later on in the day, I attended the Landlord-Tenant Protections Roundtable with Councilmember Perez, I mean Vice Mayor Perez, sorry. And then that was a successful meeting. I also attended the Transportation Commission meeting. I stayed the whole way to the very end, because I wanted to hear what was going on. And then, last thing, which is the exciting thing I was referring to earlier about the art. On the corner of Alameda and Victory, there's a black building there. Has anyone been inside of it before? I went inside of it today. It is the X-Space Studios building, and it's the art of Mike McNeely. And he did one of the album covers for Alice Cooper. He also did the mural on the side of the Marriott near the airport. And he is, his, his art's in there, and it's just amazing. It's a whole, one of the rooms is an entire room of VW buses that have been gutted, and the entire inside are dioramas, giant dioramas, and the outside is all these. It's just amazing. And the whole building is like this TARDIS of art. And you go in, and there's another room and another room, and they also have recording studios in there and filming areas and event space. It's amazing. So I told them to reach out to all four of you, and hopefully you'll, you'll get the invitation and you'll jump on that and go, because it was an absolutely amazing, super secret of, it's been there since 2016. The secret that's been in our community, and it's just amazing. So, and I got to meet the artist too, which is exciting. So hopefully you'll get a chance to do that, too. Thank you. Oh, and the art would be an amazing opportunity to use that funding. That's what I was referring to earlier.
Great. Thank you.
I'll volunteer to go next, before you volunteer me.
Well, that makes a lot of sense. Go for it.
Alrighty. So on January 10th, I attended the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust. We met once again. We had a lot of discussion items. It is very fascinating to be part of a body, a government body, that is forming itself, because we do, we, you know, I think fascinating to me, maybe not to some, but we're talking about a lot of the bylaw issues, a lot of procedural issues, how we're looking at spending our funding. And it's really the building blocks to what we're hoping is future funding for housing developments in all three of our cities. And I'm excited to come up with further updates for you all when I have something that isn't very regular like that to report. I was not able to attend the Board of Library Trustees meeting, because it happened on the same day, at the same time. I attended on the 15th the MLK Day Annual Breakfast. There were a lot of wonderful pieces of art, since we're in the spirit of art today, from our BUSD students. They were really wonderful. And then on the 18th, along with my colleague, I also attended the Landlord-Tenant Protections Roundtable. There were a lot of laughs, there was a lot of camaraderie, and I think it was, it was a wonderful session, and I'm excited to, to share the reporting out with, with all of you in coming weeks. and I'm excited to, to share the reporting out with, with all of you in coming weeks.
Yeah, next week we'll have an update on that.
Thank you. All righty. And then on January 22nd, that was yesterday, I attended the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank Youth of the Year Competition Judging. If you haven't done it yet, it is phenomenal. There are anywhere, every year, anywhere from between two to five youths who participate. These kids are phenomenal. They are participating in all kinds of activities. They are learning sign language, they're dancing, they're doing all these things. And each of them has to compete by giving a speech in front of the panel of judges. And then they're asked eight questions that of course range to all of the things that young people love being asked, like what does your future entail? What is your next five years? And, and they were just phenomenal at answering them, very honest, very heartfelt. And the two students that participated did a wonderful job. They really did. And you will all get to see the winner at the gala and celebrate them. I also attended the ANCA Burbank Annual Armenian Christmas Gathering. It was great to be there with most of my colleagues. And the ANCA always has wonderful food. I also met with our consultants, just like the rest of our colleagues here. And along with the mayor, I attended a meeting with the chamber and some of our local restaurant owners who wanted to share their ideas and thoughts about our upcoming Plastics Ordinance.
Thank you, and thank you for volunteering. Appreciate that.
I know. I'm really making the effort here.
All right, all right. I'll try to go quick, everybody. I know it's late. Thursday, January 11th, I participated in the American Public Power Association Monthly Policymakers Council Call to prepare for our fly-in. I just wanted to note for all of you and for the public that on our February 27th meeting, I'll be working with our staff like last year. I'll be participating remotely, so there could be some expanded role for our Vice Mayor in that meeting. We'll see. But I will still be there, so that'll be fun. That day, I also attended a special meeting of the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee. I know Councilmember Anthony knows because you've served in that capacity, but the mayor typically serves on that committee to ratify appointments to various county board positions. If you're serving on a county board or commission, it's ratified by all the cities in Los Angeles County. So it's, meet a couple times a year and made some appointments, which was great. Friday, January 12th, had a chance to welcome a delegation from our sister city of Incheon, South Korea, and it was really terrific. We had a chance to give them a tour of the building, talk a little bit about the history of our city. I think they particularly loved the jail and the police department and talked about some of the, the cultural differences in law enforcement. It was the beginning of what I think is going to be a really great exchange with them. And then, of course, as you mentioned, Councilmember, we had the Claytivity Pottery Ribbon Cutting. Thank you for holding that, that really heavy certificate. I get, just get so worn out doing that. Saturday, the 13th, JG Vets Foundation had a, their launch party, and I was happy to be there to celebrate with them and to, on behalf of the entire city, really congratulate them on a new service to assist our veterans and family of veterans in need in our community. Monday, the 15th, of course, we had the MLK Annual Breakfast. On the 16th, we did not, we were dark last week. We didn't have a council meeting. I met with a local boy scout who needed to earn his merit badge on, you know, civic governance and what the role of elected officials are. We had the Burbank Community YMCA Youth and Government Bill Hearing Night. And then I had to leave a little early because I had my first podcast mayor show with my Burbank. I'll be on there every single month, so if you want to trip me up, you can submit a question directly to Ross Benson or Craig Sherwood. But I, I do want to emphasize one thing I said towards the end of that segment. I am very blessed and very fortunate to have an incredible team, not just the council, but our staff, our city clerk, city treasurer. I don't think anyone's ever had it so easy being in the mayor's seat. So I thank you all for making it, making it such a delight. Then on the 17th, a few people knew, not everyone knows, Dr. Jill Biden, First Lady of the United States, landed at Burbank Airport, and I had the honor of, of meeting her. I was expecting Mayor Bass and a whole bunch of other folks. And sorry to disappoint her, it was just me, but she was very nice. She was very nice. She said that she loves flying into Burbank. She will be back a few times this year. Hopefully, her husband will too. And she said a joke that I'm sure she says to everybody. When I asked her how the flight was, she said this really is the way to travel, to which I said, yeah, that must be pretty darn nice to have your own private jet. So, pretty good. The 18th, we had a chamber monthly board meeting, so we gave an update to the Chamber of Commerce on some of our initiatives, things that we're working on here at the city. Monday, the 22nd, I had coffee with Assemblymember Friedman's District Director about the upcoming state budget process and opportunities to make some requests, including for a couple items we have talked about, like, like an equestrian trail, a bridge replacement. So we'll be working with the city manager's office to submit some comment letters, fitting, of course, within the legislative platform. The 22nd, we also had the ANCA Burbank Annual Armenian Christmas Gathering. That was fun. Meeting with the Ferguson Group today, and then, of course, that meeting with Sustainable, sorry, not with the Sustainable Burbank Commission, but regarding the ordinance that we will be seeing next week, meeting with our chamber and our local business owners. I think that's everything, certainly enough for tonight. So with that, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do any members of the council have any items they'd like to introduce? Council, okay, Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Mullins.
Okay. I would like to ask staff to come back with a report on an overall update to the Arts and Public Places Ordinance, since it was originally created in 1996. I know we mentioned it a lot tonight. Would love to see it come back.
Great. Councilmember Mullins?
Yes, and I mentioned it earlier about writing a letter to our commissioner, insurance commissioner, to discuss or perhaps voice our opinion regarding the increasing rates that is going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, I'd like to forego first step and go right to a second step, letter of support to Congressman Ted Lieu for his National Glutrap Ban.
I don't know that you jumped straight to a second step. I think staff heard you, but you can't initiate a second step. And council can't agree on an item that hasn't been put on the agenda. But staff heard you, they can bring a first step that might be mature.
Okay.
But I wouldn't call it a second step.
There you go. Fair enough.
And Mr. City Attorney, just point of information. I assume if one of us were to ever ask for a first step report, and arguably the letter fits clearly within the legislative platform, there would be the means to even forego the agenda item and simply issue the letter, if, if it's within a previously adopted platform?
Yeah, there are times, if it is, the city manager has to make a judgment as to whether it cleanly fits within that. There are a great many ideas from the council. And there are, and we, we try to do the best we can to make sure when we're not sure whether the proposed measure is representative of the entire community and want to make sure the council has an opportunity to weigh in, we certainly want it to be a first step so we know we have clear direction from a majority of the council. If it clearly fits within many of our hard-sought issues, renewables, sustainability, and things that for which we have very clear direction, then, you know, it's possible we could draft a letter that fits between the goalposts.
Great, thank you. Any other items? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to agendize a report from staff regarding the regulation of short-term rentals, aka Airbnbs, including enforcement options and charging of TOTs. And then also, if it's okay, this is not agendized,